Oh, no. Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our May 13th Fable City Council meeting to order. We welcome those who are joining us here in council chambers and those who are joining us remotely. Welcome. At this time, we will start with the invocation. We ask that Pastor Meadows from Cedar Falls Baptist Church, if he would, please come to the podium and lead us in prayer. If we could all stand for the prayer, immediately following the prayer, if we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance in unison. Good evening, Pastor.
Good evening. Let us pray. Our most merciful Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the opportunity to be here to do work. Lord, I pray right now that you would be with our city council, be with our mayor, be with everyone in attendance, Lord. May we all do the work that you've called us to do. May we come together in unity to do what's best for this city. Lord, bless this time that we have here tonight. Lord, we love you and we thank you. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, if you would, tell us, take a few minutes to tell us about yourself and your ministry.
Okay. My name is Glenn Meadows. I'm Senior Pastor at Cedar Falls Baptist Church on Ramsey Street, the north side of Fayetteville. Been the pastor there for about two and a half years now. And our ministry is just about serving the community and making sure that we meet the needs of all those that need, they're seeking and looking for something higher. And we have been blessed and honored. We got to work with the City of Fayetteville Police recently with the Hyundai Kia computer upgrade to the cars, and that was a great success. So, we're just doing what the Lord calls us to do.
Well, we thank you for that, Pastor. Appreciate you giving us the prayer tonight and thank you for your leadership on that specific side of town.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I do want to say that Cedar Falls also, when the tornado, hurricane came through back in 2016, they helped us with the road in Kings Grant where we couldn't get in or out.
Where?
And they came within a day and had us out of our neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Pastor, it was a little inside joke. I know you're doing ministry all over, but we have a North Side fanatic up here, so... But thank you, sir. All right, council, as we move to the announcements, we have, let's see, any here, but, all right. Moving to recognitions, this is National Police Week. So, we ask that Chief Braden, Chief of Police, and Mr. Daniel Torcino from the Fable Police Foundation, the President, and Ms. Melissa Reed, incoming Foundation Executive Director, if you all would meet me at the podium at this time, please.
Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and Calendar Week, which May 15th falls on as National Police Week. Whereas National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for safety and protection of others, to include the 10 fallen soldiers of the Fayetteville Police Department. Whereas, we also honor those police officers, civilian employees, who served our community with the Fayetteville Police Department. Whereas, the Fayetteville Police Foundation honors this week all our employees of the Fayetteville Police Department and their dedication and commitment to our community. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, the Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the City Council and more than 208,000 citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim the 12th through the 18th of May in the year 2024 as the City of Fayetteville Police Week and publicly statute this service of law enforcement officers and civilians in our community. We can call upon all citizens in this community to especially honor and show our sincere appreciation for all the employees of the Fayetteville Police Department. And witness thereof, I here undue set my hand and the great cause and the great seal of the City of Fayetteville to be affixed this 15th day of May 2024. Mayor Mitch Colvin.
Y'all want to have some words?
Maybe they can all come up here, Mayor.
We weren't trying to leave you out.
So, I think the shortest and the best way to try to bring this together is this week is about honoring those that protect and serve our community, that do so in a way that is unnatural to most of us and do so in a way that goes without, on most days and most times, the proper recognition for what it is that they do day in and day out. We, as the Foundation, are Fable citizens, we're business owners, we're real estate agents, we're contractors, so on and so forth, just like many of you. We want and look and aim for a safe community to not only operate our business in, but to raise our families in. And so, this week is about acknowledging and appreciating those that help us keep it safe on a daily basis. So, I want to thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, for the acknowledgement and the proclamation. And, you know, certainly, if you want more information about this week and about the things that we're doing to honor them, you can either look at our website, which is fablepolicefoundation.org, or you'll likely see a lot of it between the city's police department and our Foundation social media pages. And you probably see a lot of it flying on Glenford Drive there in front of BJ's as well, with the field of blue. So, thank you all again. Certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll be very brief. In light of the events that occurred two weeks ago in Charlotte, this proclamation means so much more today. We appreciate any recognition that we get and to truly show appreciation to our employees in a way outside of pay and all those things that we talk about on a regular basis, I think this brings light the special job that they perform on a daily, weekly basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And Chief, Chief Braden, some of the council members wanted to know if you and the officers would come in front and take a picture so we can recognize that.
I know. All right, on one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much, too, the Police Foundation, to the officers, the men and women who protect us every day, and all of your families who loan you to the city for service. We thank you for that and greatly appreciate it. Council, as we move to the next item, which is the proclamation for the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Councilman Benavente, are you doing that?
Mayor Colvin, if I can ask for, let's see here, I apologize. Ms. Sal Mumpang, I think she's here. If you don't mind coming to the center stage and Mayor Colvin, if you don't mind standing next to our representative from the organization, North Carolina Asian Americans Together, I'd be glad to read this proclamation. Whereas, Asian American and Pacific Islander Month originated in a congressional bill in June of 1977, on March 28th, 1979, President Jimmy Carter issued Presidential Proclamation 4650 proclaiming this week, beginning on May 4th, 1979, as Asian Pacific American Heritage Week. In 1992, Congress passed PL 102450, which permanently designated May as Asian American Heritage Month. In 2009, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month is officially changed to Asian American Pacific Islander Month. And whereas Asian American Pacific Islander community members have been disproportionately impacted by instances of hate and discrimination during the COVID-19 pandemic, and those experiences have disproportionately impacted out Asian American Pacific Islander youth, and whereas Asian American Pacific Islanders comprise many ethnicities and languages, and their many achievements embody the American experience, by recognizing the contributions and accomplishments of Asian American and Pacific Islander men and women, we celebrate the importance of inclusion to building a brighter future. And whereas there are only 10 Asian American Pacific Islander-Elect officials in the state of North Carolina, five in the General Assembly and five at the municipal level of government, and whereas City of Fable is strengthened by citizens of every race, religion, color, and creed, this month, we celebrate the cultural richness, contributions, accomplishments, and spirit of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fable, North Carolina, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May in the year of 2024 to be Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Thank you. And Ms. Sal, please feel free to take the microphone and just share a little bit about NCAT and introduce your organization to everyone.
Of course. Thank you so much. Actually, this is my very first time being here at Fayetteville, so thank you so much, Councilman Mario Beventi, for inviting me here. My name is Sal Mbeng. I am with North Carolina Asian Americans Together. I'm the Program Director. We are headquartered in Raleigh, North Carolina, but we extend working in areas like Fayetteville. And also, the largest nine key counties that we work with are the large, with the largest population of Asian Americans here in the state of North Carolina, and so we do work across those different regions. I'm really honored to be here today as well for Asian Heritage Month, just because Asian Americans are the second, second-largest growing ethnic group here in the state of North Carolina. There are over 40 languages that are being spoken, and most of them are being spoken at home, with 20 ethnicities as well. So, this is a really growing population, and I really appreciate all of you for recognizing Asian American Heritage Month this month as well, because identity is so much, such a big part of our safety and our recognition and our growth and our development here in North Carolina and also in towns like Fayetteville. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much for you and your organization. As we move to the next item, it's a proclamation that had been prepared for Mr. West and Sandy Cookman of WIDU. I don't see them here, but Councilmember Hare, would you like, or Councilmember McNair, did you all want to read this?
They are not here tonight, so...
So, we'll make sure that they, they get it?
If we can take it.
Okay. All right. So, congratulations again to Wes and Sandy Cookman, owners of WIDU, a pillar in the community in the radio and communications world. Moving to the next certificate, Mr. Kenneth Williams, if he would meet me, or Councilmember Benavente at the podium?
First, Benavente.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. A few weeks ago, Mayor Colvin and I attended a wonderful program at our alma mater, E. Smith High School, the alma mater of Councilmember Lynn Green as well, and we got to witness firsthand some incredible leadership from Mr. Kenneth Williams, the student body president there. So, I just wanted to make sure that us, as a city council, recognized his leadership, and I shared a little bit about his wonderful achievements throughout his high school years. Mr. Kenneth Williams was invited to the North Carolina Governor's School with a focus area in natural science. He is a member of the National Honor Society. He's also received many athletic honors as well, in Cross Country Coaches Award and the Track and Field Coaches Award. He's also received many credentials throughout his time to include this Career Readiness Certificate and the ACT Work Keys Gold. In addition to being in the student body president, he was also the sophomore class president. He was also the sophomore class vice president, E. Smith. And of course, he's also been recognized as a Cumberland County School Superintendent's voice. He's also been recognized as a North Carolina Youth Legislative Assembly Delegate. So, just with all of that leadership and experience in mind, we just wanted to make sure the City of Fable made it incredibly clear how proud we are of the leadership abilities of this individual. And just to say congratulations, Mr. Williams, if everyone could please give him a big round of applause.
We'll also give you one of our city coins as well. Now, there ain't but so many of these made every year now. I want to present you with that as well, sir. Do you change your...
Give the microphone to speak as well, sir. Mike Soliers.
I just want to take this time to thank you, Mayor Colvin. Thank you, Mario, for giving me this honor of the city coin. But this honor doesn't just go to me, this goes to my school. This goes to all of the future and current students of E. Smith High School that deserve better for their school and for their education. So, not only does this represent me, but this represents the students at 1800 Seabook Road and all of the accomplishments that they've had as well. Thank you.
And Mr. Williams, before you sit down, if the Williams family would like to come up and maybe take a big family photo as well, I please invite you to the front. You guys are all here.
Mayor Colvin, if I could have a moment of personal privilege, too. I had the honor of interviewing this young man over the weekend through the ICON program, and so you will see him working with the city attorney's office this summer, so...
Well, that's... And I see a lot of his family members who also have a long history of service in the community, so, good stock, good stock, so, great school.
Attorney, didn't you graduate from E. Smith, too?
Yes, ma'am, I did. Thank you.
All the Golden Bulls on council, that's right.
Congratulations. See, my classmates, they're Rod. How you doing? All right. Thank you, Councilmember Benavente. Well, council, certainly always like to take time to recognize all of those in our community that are doing great work. So, if you or someone you know are doing things in the community, let us know, let your council representative or myself know so that we can make sure that we acknowledge you or other members of our community. We have some great work going on and great people in our, in our city. With that, we'll move to the City Manager's Report. Mr. Hewitt, have a mouthful of cookies or something over there, don't you? They're not that chewy.
Yes, cough drop. It's got it from Councilmember Dino Hondros. I hope I'm gonna be okay after eating it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Would, as always, tell and ask citizens to sign up for the City Manager's Newsletter every week. It has the latest and greatest happenings here in the city of Fayetteville. You can access the newsletter through the City of Fayetteville's website, favelnc.gov. And I would also say that as we move into budget season, it will also be the place to find the latest information as the council navigates some, taking the recommended budget, which will be presented tonight, to adopting hopefully a council's budget sometime in early June. So, again, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Hondros, too.
For the cough drop, right. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Manager. Council, with that, we'll move to item 6.0, is the approval of the agenda. We can have a motion to approve. Councilmember Thompson. It's a motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve, seconded by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on approval of the agenda? All right, council, we'll use our sure system. Missing one. Who... Oh, all right. All right. Ms. Green. Oh, Benavente. Okay. So, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those voting. Motion carries. Item 7.0 is the public forum. Per council policy, 120.9, this is a time that city residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. The public forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, and we will, each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city. No time will be yielded to any other speaker or by another speaker. However, if the full three minutes is not taken, there are more speakers that we can give an opportunity to express their comments. Individuals wishing to speak at the forum tonight should have signed up with the city clerk's office no later than 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. When the clerk calls your name, we ask that you please approach the podium. Please clearly state your name and an address for the record, and when the light on the podium changes from green to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and when the light changes to red, it means your time has expired. Any speakers on the public forum that did not get an opportunity to address the council will have the option to have their name placed at the beginning of the next scheduled public forum meeting, next meeting on the public forum list of speakers. So, with that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have 17 speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Michelle Bass. Ms. Michelle Bass, not present. Our next speaker is Ms. Christina Aguirre. Ms. Christina Aguirre, okay, not here. Ms. Joy Potts. Ms. Joy Potts. Next speaker, Ms. Kristy Jarrett. Speaker number five, Ms. Lizette Rodriguez.
Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez.
Hello, council. Lizette Rodriguez, 1701 Cherokee Drive. Hope you guys are doing well. First, I want to start with some feedback about the public safety forum. I want to start with some sugar, and I want to commend you guys for putting on a public safety forum and inviting all the different partners to come together. And I do hope that if there's another one of these, that it will be scheduled during a time that is not during the nine-to-five workday. The public was encouraged to attend, but many couldn't due to it being in the middle of the workday. I know I was on my laptop working remotely while I was there. Also, I couldn't help but notice that the data from Dr. Tate about OCS that the city was waiting for did not get presented, and that was one of the main reasons I attended in hopes of learning what he had found. But instead, the audience received vague questions and an analysis based in theoreticals about which type of calls the FPD gets most, ones related to mental health or to violence. But the data that we do know is this, the police department gets 4,000 mental health calls a month. That's 48,000 calls a year for a city around 200,000 people. And in the FPD's third quarter report, they even indicated that suicides are up 52%. And per the Department of Health at the summit, they mentioned that over half of violent deaths in Cumberland County are due to suicide. So, are suicides classified as violent calls? How about Jada Johnson or Justin Liv say, were those considered violent calls since there were weapons on scene? Regardless, the plot has seemed to be lost about what an alternative response model is. Durham and other response teams don't exclusively respond to just mental health-related calls. They also respond to calls related to trespassing, which is often associated with homelessness, domestic violence calls, domestic disputes, overdoses, non-emergency medical calls, counseling for people in crisis, welfare checks, requests for transportation to social services, substance abuse treatment facilities, and medical care providers. So, will the city also be analyzing calls related to all those things I just listed? Will they analyze calls about a grandmother who is calling because her husband fell in their house and the police needs to come help him get up? During the presentation at the public safety forum, very little was said about a mental health response team. In fact, only 10 minutes was spent talking about mental health. I know because I counted. And even though this is what the council has been aiming to get for the past year, it seems like now the council wants to go in another direction, and now it's, we're either gonna have a mental response team or we're...
Ms. Rodriguez. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Chilenko Hurst.
Mr. Hurst, how you doing?
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council and the public. Okay. I'm gonna go into a brief oratory and ask what our moral code at concerning this country because it has deteriorated. We have individuals who come out for events for the homeless, whether it be churches or individual citizens. But I went to a meeting right before I came to this meeting right here, and the homelessness, as far as housing for them, it's came into the same dimensions as residences for domestic violence. Everyone speaks on those two topics, but nobody wants to be in close confines with them. So, we've lost our moral code as far as helping out our fellow humanity. We just want to do good speaking points, but we don't want them in close proximity. Also, we've had a hate crime within the last 15, 16 months in the city of Fayetteville of a black military veteran right on Sky Bowl, and it seems to me that, especially the black military, and I got them in my immediate family, so it's friend or foe with me. I don't differentiate. The lack of support for those who have been murdered by law enforcement, black military, no one showed up for these families, whether it be the Robinson case or the Addison case, or whether it be the Sutton case at Detention Center here in Fayetteville, or whether it be Jason Walker shot in the back by off-duty law enforcement. People showing up for plates and parades, but they're not showing up for these citizens. Showing up for that. Also... and parades, but they're not showing up for these citizens. Showing up for that. Also, I've noticed that the integrity of our churches in this country have 712 churches in the confines of Fayetteville. 712. But where is the individuals that are willing to not only serve and help the veterans, everyone speaks on veterans, but what about the homeless? What about them? I see people that want to go out, or they speak good, but we don't see them in close proximity, like I said before. The same amount of enthusiasm whenever Trump comes to this town, whether it be especially for support of the military and regular citizens, we need the same support for those in domestic violence and homeless. And I thank you for your time, consideration, and hopefully something I said will motivate individuals, because someone from the churches back in the day, when I was a misspent youth, come and tried to save me. It was the second visit when I was 16 years old, when I came back from Germany. Where are the black churches at? Going to where is it? That juvenile detention center? Where they at? I need to know where they at. But they showed up from my behind when I got in trouble, when I came back from Germany. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Gerard Falls. Mr. Gerard Falls.
Good evening. Mr. Falls?
Good evening. Good evening. All right, there's a timer there. Okay. Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam. My name is Gerard Falls. I live at 226 Judge Street here in Fayetteville, and I'm also the superintendent of Capital Encore Academy, which is a K-12 public charter school with about 800 students here in downtown. And I'm here to speak in support of OCS, but to kind of zoom in on a specific situation that occurred, and I think how it illustrates the need not only for an Office of Community Safety, but specifically for mental health responders, and for a director who is able to advocate for the needs of the city. Because of time, I'm going to have to condense the story quite a bit, but I'm happy to follow up with City Council with many more of the details to kind of illustrate the issue. As with all folks downtown, we're very aware of the issue of homelessness existing within downtown and the myriad of factors, and folks who are experiencing being unhoused. With the school, there haven't really been very many problems. There's some folks who like the front entryways of the school, which we don't actually use except for at dismissal. We use the back entrance of the building. But back in February or so, there was an incident where someone had become very agitated and upset during dismissal, and the decision was made that we needed to probably go ahead and do a trespassing order, which we did. Eventually, what ended up happening is that person was arrested for trespassing or cited for trespassing, missed a court date, and then had a warrant put out and had to go to court, and I was summoned to go to court as representative of the school. And when I got to court, and this was about two weeks ago, I found out that the person had been in jail for the last 30 days, which is pretty disturbing. But I also found out that he had received psychiatric care while he was there, and had been determined that he was not competent to stand trial, that was the terminology used, which was not a surprise. And in my naive mind, I thought would mean that now this person was going to get the help that they need. But that's not what happened. The charges were dropped, again, which I was fine with, and then they were back out on the streets of Fayetteville, receiving none of the mental health care, which the psychiatrist had basically just said that that person needs. And so when I asked about this, they basically, the DA's office pretty much told us, well, you can just go through the same process again, which is unconscionable, or you can wait till the situation escalates or another incident happens where maybe someone is threatened, which, again, also seems unconscionable as well. I know that the resources involved in dealing with what would be needed for folks experiencing severe mental health issues or are homeless is beyond just the capacity of the city. But I believe that a director of the Office of Community Safety could be that advocate to the county and to Raleigh to help get those resources back in place. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Falls.
Dr. Latoya Parker. Dr. Latoya Parker. Ms. Barbara Gather. Barbara Gather? Gather, sorry.
Good evening, Ms. Gather.
Do I gotta press a button?
No, it's ready.
First, give an honor to the Lord Jesus Christ, and hello to everyone.
If you could speak into the mic for us.
Okay. I came because of an issue in my community. I live off of Stony Point. It's considered the west side of Fayetteville. It's like we're away from everybody. But streetlights were supposed to have been on both sides of the street when they built the subdivision, and they never did what they said they were gonna do. So that's my concern, first of all, to see what happened. And every mayor that's been in office, I have not talked to you, Mr. Colvin.
Okay, I was about to say, I don't remember talking to you.
I've talked to them, and nothing was done. And I had, this is my first time coming to the forum, and I will be back. And I was gonna say, you guys, when you're getting ready to go into office, you sending all this mail, your pictures and everything, what you're gonna do, send out notices for the meetings, so people will know when and where to come. How much time? Oh, I've got some more time.
Can you tell us whereabouts on Stony Point?
I live at Seven, oh, I forgot that. I'm sorry. I am a senior citizen now, so I got my little notes, and that was second. I live at 7912 Gaelic Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina.
What subdivision area is that?
That's Springfield Crossing.
Councilmember Thompson, is that your district?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Derek Thompson. See, and every time we get a new council member, the next thing you know, somebody else come in office. So it's nice to meet you, sir. You'll be hearing from me. You will be hearing from me. Thank you very much. And the other thing, I'm not from here. We came here by way of military. My husband retired here, and I did not like Fayetteville at all. So you know what? Since I'm gonna be living here, I'm gonna be a part of the community, and I want to see some things happen for my grandchildren. So that's what it's about. And I was gonna say at the end, and I still got a little bit of time, let's just work together, do some things, because this is not a bad place. It's not a great place, but we can make it better. Okay? I still got some time. Oh, one other thing. Hope County, I live a half a mile from Hope County, but yet we're in Cumberland County. And then we got city taxes. We were not in the city. We're in the city of Cumberland County, and I do not like that. Put us back in Hope County or move the sign. Now my time is out.
All right. Ms. Pat, how you doing? Yeah, all right.
Our next speaker is Mr. Michael Pennick.
Good evening, Mr. Pennick. Good evening, members of council. I'm Michael Pennick, 325 Hay Street. I'm here on behalf of Cool Springs Downtown District to speak regarding the proposal to limit paid parking in downtown, or reduce it from going all the way till 7:00 p.m. to reduce that back to 5:00 p.m. A few weeks back, our Board of Directors met, and we had some council members there with us. We discussed the proposal at length, and we, as a board, voted to support the proposed amendment to bring the parking hours, reduce them back to 5:00 p.m. Without getting into all the discussion that happened, it was a, it was a good discussion, and everybody on our board, I think it was a unanimous vote. There was one member abstaining, but we all supported that issue. So you're hearing from a lot of downtown business owners and residents who are in support of reducing the amount of time that we're charging for parking in downtown Fayetteville. I know it's a difficult decision to make when it comes up for a vote. You'll be faced with the choice between having some more revenue or reducing paid parking hours. That's a tough choice. I'm not sure exactly what the right answer is, but in the course of our discussion, in a democratic fashion, we voted to support that proposed change. And I hope you have a great discussion about it and make the right choice for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Elaine Kelly.
Good evening, Ms. Kelly. How you doing?
I'm Elaine Kelly, and I have a business at 242A Hay Street. I live in Cumberland County up in Linden. But I'm here to speak, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, and council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, to reduce paid parking, as Michael Pennick just talked about, from 7:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. The benefit that we see as downtown businesses is that 5:00 p.m. is when people get off and want to come down and enjoy downtown. We recognize we have to have managed parking, and that that's a, we do that during business hours. But in the evenings and on the weekends, our public wants to come down and enjoy a night out, a movie, a dinner at our local restaurants, and just walk up and down the streets. They have to choose whether they're gonna do that at a place that has parking that's free, or whether they're gonna come down and enjoy downtown. We want a vibrant downtown business district. And the difference between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., I think when you weigh them, the interest is completely on the side of allowing the public to enjoy our downtown, the way they enjoy it anywhere else in our city. There are other people that are gonna speak to this, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Molly Arnold. Ms. Molly Arnold.
Good evening, Ms. Arnold.
Molly Arnold, 227 Hay Street, Fayetteville. If you all will humor for me for a minute, because probably not everyone will get a minute to speak that has signed up, would you mind if all of you all stood that were in favor of the reduction of paid parking, please? Meet my friends and neighbors. So you've heard Elaine speak eloquently on that. I'm gonna be really brief. We need that reduction from 7:00 to 5:00 to survive. Life is tough for all of us in a lot of ways. It's especially tough for small business owners these days, and we really ask for you to be on board to vote for that 7:00 to 5:00 decrease for us. Thank you.
Ms. Nancy Ramos.
Good evening, Ms. Ramos.
I do not, oh. My name is Nancy Ramos. I am the owner of Vagabond Cafe at 108 Hay Street. I am here to express my opinion, concerns, and complaints on parking here downtown. My decision to come downtown as a business owner was due to the foot traffic that downtown was getting back in 2020. Since then, I have seen the decline of such foot traffic, and this is due to paid parking. I hear it all the time when I use my extension of my company, which is a mobile coffee shop, to encourage people to visit me and multiple businesses downtown, and I get the same response. I don't come downtown because I have to pay. You may not like the answer, but it is what people are saying, and we have to listen to them. In order for us to thrive as business owners, we have to listen to what people are demanding. Downtown does not have the appeal and entertainment yet to charge people during the week. We can see that with all the current empty spaces downtown to which many of those businesses had to close their doors because they weren't making enough money, and I think it's because of this lack of foot traffic. As a business owner, I expect an unloading and loading zone. This would prevent issues such as last week, for example, when my vehicle was hit by a car while I was unloading things into my business, yet I was cited for prohibited parking because I was in an undesigned parking space. Having paid parking during the weekdays is unreasonable to our consumers and to the handful of restaurants and stores who are struggling to keep their doors open. Those that want to support small businesses rather than large companies spend their lunch break to support us, and yet we make them pay. I believe that Hay Street should have the majority of its spaces as a 20-minute parking space. This will make downtown businesses more accessible and more encourage, and encourage more people to have a short break to support the small businesses that we are struggling and, and, sorry, businesses who are struggling. For those that want to spend a longer time, they can park at the larger parking lots and the parking garage if charging is a thing that we must do. Now, don't get me wrong. I believe that a lot of my peers have a lot to offer, and those of us left are still trying to develop downtown for the potential that it could have. But we're not there yet as a whole to make downtown desirable and charge people to support what we do have currently. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bobby Burgess. Mr. Bobby Burgess. Oh, sorry. I'm just reading off the paper.
I don't believe I put my pronouns on there, but yes, it is, it is Ms. Alrighty.
Good evening, Ms. Burgess.
Evening, Mayor. Evening, councilpeople. It's been a minute. I'm gonna say real quick, yeah, the parking, it's gotta go. Like, it's not cute, and I hate having friends in the triangle, and I have to tell them, yeah, Fayetteville is the junk town that makes you pay until 7:00. They're like, really? It's only till 5:00 here. I don't like having that conversation, so. I will just say that. That should change. But I'm actually, oh, first of all, my name's Bobby. I live at 2108 Constitution Drive. Cool. I'm here to talk about the Office of Community Safety. About a year ago, I spoke up here in favor of it and referenced my personal battles with depression and the impact that OCS would have in helping me navigate those. But today, I'm actually gonna address a different side of my trifecta of diagnoses. Yeah, I don't have one. I have three. It's great. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about anxiety. We're gonna bring it back to the definition real fast from Mayo Clinic, which is that an anxiety attack is an episode of intense fear or anxiety and physical symptoms based on a perceived threat rather than imminent danger. It can last a few days to a few weeks. And I could speak from personal experience that depending on my stressors, I will spiral, ruminate, and catastrophize about something that's happening that's major. But to get myself grounded, I usually use something from CBT, cognitive behavioral therapy, where I make myself reassess the situation for what is true. I reframe it. Now, I'd like to suggest that the city of Fayetteville is in paralysis and is having an anxiety attack around the issue of OCS, a perceived fear of its potential failure in the city. And, you know, I get that from, you know, some of the hesitation, and even you, Mr. Mayor, saying from the Public Safety Summit that you want to do it, but you know, you want to get it right. And I could say from personal experience, I know that. I know that phrase all too well. But there's some great examples. So let's look at the facts really quickly, right? Let's, let's reframe. At the Public Safety Summit, many community leaders said an OCS would help their operations. Having something centralized for funding and coordination would help them make them more effective. We would not be the first. We would not be the first. There is a blueprint to follow. Durham, Greensboro, Portland, many cities across the country. And there's funding. Funding, yeah. The American Care Plan. There's funding for us to be able to make sure we can do it right. And it's, there's $90 million available now, and we need $3 million to get going, right? So for me, I'm looking at the facts, and I think this is a safe decision to make. So what's the council gonna do? You guys gonna stay paralyzed? Are you gonna move on an initiative that will really help others gain resources needed to navigate their mental health crises? Just $3 million. That's it, y'all. That's it.
Ms. Diane Poffatt.
Poffatt, how are you?
Thank you all so much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you all so much for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My husband, Hank Parfit, and I live at 112 Hay Street, where we have a business downtown, downstairs, City Center Gallery and Books. I'm here to support the proposal to change the paid parking time from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM to 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. As a business owner downtown, I see many of the ramifications of the paid parking, both the good and the bad, but a lot of that is for another conversation. But we can mitigate some of the negative issues if we move the time back to 5:00 PM. In people's mind, paid parking until 7:00 PM is basically all day. I've had several book clubs and groups that meet at my store at 6:00 or 7:00 PM. They are caught in that window where the end time for paid parking may only be a few minutes later. What do they do? Do they pay for parking or risk not paying and getting a ticket? In the scope of things, I have to interject. After hearing some of the things that I've heard from some of the speakers tonight, this may not sound like the most important thing that you do. I really feel for these other issues, and they are important to our city. But all of the issues that we deal with have to be dealt with in the best possible fashion, so that's what we're here to talk about. We all need to do everything that we can to continue to promote downtown as a place to shop, dine, and experience the heart of our city. Almost every day, I have out-of-town people who come to my bookstore and tell me how much they love our downtown. Sometimes it's our local people who don't always recognize what a jewel we have. Let's do what we can to make it easier for them to come downtown and enjoy the heart of the city. Please support changing the time, the ending time for parking to 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parfit.
Mr. Sean McMillan. And this is our final speaker for the evening.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. McMillan.
Good evening. Sean McMillan, 624 Golden Rain Drive. I'll start off, like Lisette, talking about the sugar that is the, the attempt by the city to bring everybody together to talk about public safety and the, and the OCS. I commend the staff. I commend the members that put time into putting that form together. I think it's an important step forward. I have to keep challenging this body and this city to do better and to move forward and not just have the motion of moving forward and confuse that with forward progress. We can do better. We missed some opportunities to talk in a very specific way about resources. I expect a budget is going to be presented very soon by this body, and I find it problematic that we didn't talk about any figures when we had the ear of the public and when we could have really had a realistic discussion about what it's going to take to have an OCS. I fear that you're going to present a budget that is going to be pushed to the public without, with a missed opportunity to actually get some input from experts that were there with us. Also think we missed an opportunity to center mental health response. We had experts, especially expert from emancipated North Carolina that could have talked about a very specific model that this, this body has already talked about and agreed on, the Durham Harts model. And she was relegated to one comment out of all those hours. We could have gotten an update on the OCS director. My understanding, we're in the full swing of a hiring practice, right? We're getting close to getting an OCS director. Why didn't we talk about that with the community when we had their ear, when everybody was there? And that's, that's the type of transparency we've been pushing for, and we have to continue to push for until this body brings, brings something that the community can hold on to. Just in, in talking about transparency, I, I have to recognize that we did not talk about independent oversight at all. It was omitted from the pillars for OCS, and that's not what the public asked for. We specifically asked for independent oversight, something that has been on this council's table for the last 12, 12 years, since 2012. Why are we afraid to mention it in a public forum? We know the expertise that comes from having an oversight practitioner as an OCS director. Why aren't we advocating for that and talking about that at every turn? And then I'm going to name two individuals who, who have lost their lives recently to the FPD, and we're not talking about that either. I'm going to name Lawrence Artist specifically, who died on October 6th here in Fayetteville. We, we have time to give awards, but we don't have time to hold our officials, our law enforcement accountable. And that was the young man who died with his hands behind his back, whose autopsy is still pending seven months later. And then the other, other person is Demarcus Brody, whose autopsy is available.
Mr. McMillan.
But nobody has talked about that either.
All right.
So I just charge you all with being more transparent and doing better.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Mayor, we have no more speakers.
All right. Thank all the speakers. We did get, get everyone opportunity to speak tonight, so thank you for your comments. Council will move to the next item, which is to consent, entertain a motion to approve consent. All right. This is motion by Councilmember Benavente, second by Councilmember Hare. We're going off the shore system here. All right. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Let's hear your votes on the shore. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those voting. Moving to staff reports, report by PB Myers and the Audit and Financial Results for a year ending June 30, 2023. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and the public. I'm Jody Picarella, your Chief Financial Officer. I'm here to introduce Robert Bitner, partner in PB Myers, our external audit forum, who will present the audit results for June 30, 2023.
Good evening, sir.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Get to talk about the most exciting thing of the evening, and that is the audit.
Spoken like a true accountant.
Very, very happy to be here this evening. On behalf of myself, on behalf of PB Myers, thank you for allowing us to continue to serve the city. We certainly do appreciate the opportunity. I'd also like to thank staff here, your CFO, Jody, who graciously introduced me here, her team, really, we come in, ask lots of questions. We really give a hard time when we're here to get the information we need to render our audit opinion.
Hold on a sec. Madam Clerk, are you all having trouble pulling up the audit report on your iPad? Yeah? All right. All right. Sorry about that, sir.
No, no problem.
Go ahead.
So with that, I just, I'll get started. We're going to do a fairly abbreviated report here. We had a, a nice, long discussion earlier today at the Audit Committee meeting, so, but I will be happy to entertain any questions or go into any further detail at any point in time. Please stop me in the middle and be happy to do that. So with that, as external auditors, our job is to render an opinion as to whether or not your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. Now, as auditors, we can issue four types of opinions. We can issue an adverse opinion, which is the worst type of opinion you can receive, stating that your financial statements are not fairly presented. We can disclaim an opinion, meaning that we did not see enough information to render an opinion one way or another. We can have a qualified opinion, which is where we believe everything is fairly stated except for maybe one or two parts of the audit, or the, excuse me, the financial statements. But the highest level of assurance that we can provide is the unmodified or clean opinion, which the city of Fayetteville did receive an unmodified or clean opinion on their June 30th, 2023 financial statements. In addition to the audit opinion, we audit under what's called Government Auditing Standards or the Yellow Book. And with that, we are charged with issuing our report on your compliance with laws, regulations, grants, contracts, as well as identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control over the preparation of the financial statements or compliance that we identified during the course of our audit. So we did have one material compliance violation this year. This is a repeat violation from the prior year as it relates to the timing of the submission of the audit. Per the North Carolina statutes, the audit should be submitted within four months after the end of the fiscal year with a automatic one-month grace period, so going to Jan., excuse me, December 1st. And of course, the audit was submitted this past week, last week, making it several months past the compliance deadline. With that, there were no other compliance issues as it relates, compliance or internal control issues as it relates to the Yellow Book or Government Auditing Standards. We are also charged with issuing our opinion on your compliance with federal and state grants, as well as the passenger facility charges program. So federal grants under the Uniform Guidance, state grants under the State Single Audit Implementation Act. Here, we issue two separate reports on, not only do we issue our opinion on your compliance, but we also identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control over that compliance that we, that we see during the course of our audit. Excuse me. We did have one significant deficiency in internal control or compliance as it relates to the CDBG program, specifically on the timing of reports. And that is just that three of the four reports, the quarterly reports are required to be filed within 30 days, were not filed within that 30-day timeframe. I want to reiterate there, there were no question costs or no material compliance violations. This was just an internal control item. With that, those are the main reports that we have. You should also have as, as part of your package here, what we call a report to the city council, and this is our, what we call the AUC 260 Auditor's Communication to Those Charged with Governance. This document is a required communications by auditing standards hereby letting those charged with governance, in this case, mayor and city council, of the, some of the major items that go through the course of an audit. So I'm not going to hit on everything on here because there's, you know, several, there's probably eight pages of items that are required communications, but I'm going to hit, highlight a few things. First one being, we did not have any disagreements with management. We agreed with the methods that management used and their assumptions for auditing, for estimates. We also agree with management and their application of GAAP. We did not have any audit adjustments during the current year. We did have one uncorrected misstatement in the financial statements. That was a rollover from last year, so there was nothing that happened this year. It was just the correcting, reversing entry that happened in the previous year. We did not, we did not have any difficulties retaining or getting information from management. However, we did have some difficulties getting information out of the Oracle system. So I want to make sure that, just be very clear, one of the reasons, the primary reason for the timing being the, the implementation of a new system, we did have issues getting information out of there, but nothing related to response from management as it was quite, we never had any time that we were waiting for management to respond to something. They were very prompt on that. From there, there's the last major item that I need to cover as it relates to this report. Not only does it include your, the auditing estimates that are in here as uncorrected misstatements, but the last section of here is what's called the Local Government Commission's Performance Indicators. So during the preparation of the submission of the audit to the Local Government Commission, we have to complete what's called the Data Input Form. The Data Input Form has a tab on it called Performance Indicators. These are required communications from the, that are calculations prepared on the LGC's template of what they call Performance Indicators of Concern, and they will pop red if there is Performance Indicators. What are these? These are items that the Local Government Commission requires city council to have direct communication back to the Local Government Commission within 60 days of tonight's presentation. The city did have three Performance Indicators of Concern this year, two of which really relate to each other, one being the timing of the audit, the other being if there were any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control. And since the material compliance finding was timing of the audit, those two sort of, those two overlap. The other item that was listed was that this past year, the, the city budgeted for appropriated fund balance in the general fund and also actually had a reduction in general fund fund balance by a small number. I just want to make sure that they know, that you know that this is just an item that they want you to address to make sure that, that you're not continually operating off of back of reserves and that you're making sure that you budget enough for each year. No concerns here. The past five years has shown strong growth in general fund fund balance, except for this past year. So when I say strong growth, you're talking millions of dollars each year, and then this past year, it went down by about 500,000. So really just using that from one time, but I just want to make sure that you're, that you're aware that this is a one-time thing and that, that it's just a response that they're going to ask for. So with that, in summary, I will say clean opinions all the way around. No material noncompliance. Did have the one, or excuse me, there was one material noncompliance related to the timing, but outside of that, there was no material compliance findings that we identified, and no other significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls that relates to the financial statements. And again, I'll say clean opinion. That's the highest level assurance we can provide, and I'll be glad to answer any questions council may have.
Yes, sir. We appreciate it. We do have a couple of questions. Councilmember Hare and I have a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and want to thank PM Morris for their audit and financial results. As he stated, we met with the, he met with us in the Audit Committee at 3:00 PM this afternoon. Let me take this moment to say that our Audit Committee consists of Councilmember Thompson, Councilmember Hondros, and Mr. Akbar from Methodist College, and myself as chair. As was stated just, just now, and I'm happy to hear that the state of our finances are good for the city of Fayetteville with strong growth. We are aware of the audit concerns and that those have been properly put in place. Now, we have two support systems or organizations, to include your, your own, that are here to help us with any type of concerns with audit. So once again, after the mayor makes his, asks his questions, Mayor, if you would come back to me, I would like to make a motion to receive the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hare. Again, appreciate it. Good to see you again. Did have a couple of questions that popped out. One, during your presentation, you said something about that there was a use of reserves for general operations. Is that using one-time money for something recurring? Like, is that?
It's just basically where the, your expenses exceeded your revenues one time in, in the general fund. It is not a, this is not what I would call a systemic problem, as was, there's been strong growth in the general fund fund balance over the past five years. But when there was, the Performance Indicator specifically, as it's highlighted, states that the, the city did budget appropriated fund balance to bounce, balance out the budget from the prior year. When I say prior year, it's fiscal '23 is we're talking about. And there was a small reduction in overall fund balance, indicating that you did actually use some of that fund balance during the course of the year. However, again, not really of much concern, given, one, the size of the amount that it was down, and, two, given the strong growth over the past several years as it relates to that fund balance.
Okay. So make sure I'm following you. The reserves is where we, you know, state has an 8% minimum. I think there's a city goal of 10, and we use, hang around somewhere around 13 to 14, right?
So your, your reserve, your fund balance policy is 10%, and you still, at the end of '23, met that policy.
Okay. But you're saying we went into it for?
We went into it for just a little bit in this past year, and that is what the Performance Indicator will say response. But I just, I will be clear that it is, you are still within your fund balance policy by a good, healthy amount.
Okay. And, and with that being said, I'm looking at the page that you have in the report that compares the percentages of general fund net expenditures. Is that the right page? Okay. So I'm looking at the averages of, so basically, it showed the city of Fayetteville, 39% in '22, then it went down to 27%. But it's showing cities of similar size with and without electric systems, and the state was around 60%. was around 61%. Can you tell that variance? That's just that we spent less out of it, or does that reflect to the size of it?
It reflects on the size, and I'm, we mentioned this during the audit committee meeting, that the larger the size of the city, the lower that percentage is really will be. And your compare, your comparative peers begin at a population of 50,000 or 50,000 people and up. So you're really up in the upper, in the upper tiers when it comes to the state looking at that. And that's basic, that is a number based off what your projected expenditures are for the next year. So it's a percentage of your, your budgeted expenditures the next year. What do you have in fund balance? So again, I, I don't see anything of concern as it relates to it. It just happens to be, if you have a lot of expenditures budgeted in the next year for a large project, that's going to skew it.
Okay. And I think there was one more question that I had, which was about where it relates to the, to the debt. Cities over 100,000, so I guess our comparable peers, the debt of, Charlotte's a little higher, but I'm looking at Durham at six, and then I guess we're lower than Greensboro, High Point, and Raleigh and Winston. Okay, so that makes sense. Okay. Well, that's all the questions that I had.
Yes, sir. That's just your legal debt margin calculation, 8% from what you have outstanding against that, 8% of total assessed value.
Gotcha. All right. Counsel, any other questions? All right. If seeing none, I'll go to you, Councilmember Harren.
Thank you, Mayor. The options that are requested of us tonight is that we move, I move that we accept our, the results of our audit and financial results of our report for our June 30, 2023.
All right. As a motion to accept, the report is given seconded by Councilmember Benevente. Any dis, is that, did you have a question? Okay.
Two seconds, man.
All right. Yeah, I saw him down under. All right. Any, any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for action to accept the report. All right. Motion carries unanimous. And you, are you assisting us in any recommendations to make sure that this is on time on the next?
Yes, sir. We're working, we're working with the management team quite robustly to make sure that that's going to happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, Counsel, we'll move to our section on public hearings. Public hearings, we're going to hold a public hearing where the city council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak at tonight's hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the start of tonight's meeting. We begin, we will begin with a staff presentation and then move into formal hearings. 15 minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those that oppose the item discussed in the hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated to speak, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. So when the city clerk calls your name at the end of the presentation, please come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record, and you may then address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and the timer will ring at the end of your allotted time. So with that, I'll give it to you, Ms. Keisha. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. The first public hearing we have tonight is for a proposed closing of Carthage Drive. Carthage Drive is an unopened street that is at Senior Center East. We have contacted everyone, we've contacted the adjacent property owners, which of course is the city, and one adjacent property owner, and they had no problems with the closure. We've contacted all the utility companies and will be reserving an underground and overground, I mean above ground utility easement on behalf of the city and the Public Works Commission. We verified that there would be no impact to any emergency services that would go to the property, and no access is denied by approving the closing. This portion will be divided amongst the adjacent property owners, so half of the property should come to the city, and it should be used for landscaping is what I've been told, to beautify the Senior Center East.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
No, we have no speakers for this item.
All right. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll go to Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move that we adopt the resolution in order of closing Carthage, is that said right, Drive.
All right. As a motion by Councilmember Davis to approve, seconded by Councilmember Harren, any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes on this item. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous of those voted. And with that, we'll move to item 10.02, public hearing to consider closing Joseph Street. Ms. Keisha, good to see you again.
Again. Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Joseph Street is a little bit different. This one, they, they're not proposing to close the entire street, just a portion of it. The closing is not going to inhibit any access for anyone along the street. Everyone has been notified and no one contacted me or had any issues with the closing. Also, we did post this to make sure that anybody that used the street, because this one is actually there, was aware. This is a commercial development, as I understand it, has been proposed for this area, so this was the first step in the process. If the street gets closed, then their intent is to buy all the property around it, make it one large parcel. We will be also reserving a utility easement for this parcel for Public Works and the city again. It may be moved once the development comes in, but for now, that was the request, so we will do that. And again, we did contact all the emergency services and utility companies, and no other utility company had any requests, and the emergency services said it would not affect their times at all.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
No, we have no speakers for this item.
All right. So with that, we'll close the public hearing, and I will go to Councilmember Hutton, Hutton, Benevente, I believe.
No, you had it right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt the resolution in the order of closing that stretch of Joseph Street.
All right. As a motion by Councilmember Hondros, I do see Benevente's. All right. So you're second? All right. Seconded by Councilmember Benevente, and I am looking at the short machine, so I can't see your hands. You all, all right. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous of those voting. All right. Thank you, Ms. Keisha. All right. Moving to item 11.01, adoption of recommended FYI 2025 strategic plan. There's the team. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, good evening. It seems like it's been a while since we've been.
No, where y'all been hiding at?
Staying busy.
Know the feeling, brother.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor, per team and council, my name is Chris Lowry, the Strategian Performance Manager for the city. Presenting with me tonight is Mr. Andy Brayboy. He is the Senior Corporate Performance Analyst for the city. Tonight, we're going to discuss the FYI 25 strategic plan, the recommendation. You know, in January 28th, 29th, we had our strategic planning retreat. Their consultant came back and we identified the five priorities that council was going to focus on for this year. So we'll start this presentation. The presentation you see before you, it's going to be more content based. It's not going to be the actual book that you will have printed out at the end of the adoption. We actually will show that and we'll highlight some of that, and it should have been in your, in granite cards for you to also take a look at some of the draft proposal for the book itself. First up, we have city council with their photos. We'd like to put that in there just so everyone's aware. We also have the mission and the vision that council has put forward to move the city in the right direction. The mission for the city of Fayetteville is to provide quality and sustainable public services for our communities to thrive and businesses to grow. The vision is to be an attractive, culturally diverse, and inclusive city that is safe, prosperous, innovative, and unified. Looking at our table of contents, our agenda for tonight is to discuss the message from the city manager, which will be in the actual book itself, strategic planning process and accomplishments, stakeholder input, and resident survey, our strategic framework, the strategic priorities and action plans that are corresponding with each priority, and then touch on our next steps and our conclusion. So looking at the message that we have here, this is the city manager's message that would, which would be in the book itself. It's just a snippet from it, but this is a message from the manager to staff to give them a forward thinking perspective. That would then use that to move council, council and staff forward together. That is the theme of the message is to move forward together, to show that, that working together, that cohesiveness. Within that, you will see the strategic planning priorities. There are five there that was approved by council. I won't delve into that right now. That will be later on. We'll discuss that and some of the action plans to follow with each one of those priorities. So this is some information that we had seen during the council retreat was our performance highlights and accomplishments. I won't read through this list in the essence of time. I'll just touch base on a few of the different ones. Recently, we were the four-time recipient of the All-American City Award, so that's showcasing our resiliency and our innovation. We have about 12 stormwater CIP projects underway for enhanced infrastructure. We have the Day Resource Center, which was open to support our residents in need. Around $2.9 million in grants awarded to 60 small businesses for economic growth. The voters recently approved our $97 million Fayetteville Forward Geo Bond for transformative projects. Around $4.3 million in grants allocated for pedestrian and roadway safety projects, as well as Fayetteville been a five-time recipient of the ICMA Certificate of Excellence, underscoring our unwavering commitment to performance and service delivery. And we're also the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Looking at our strategic plan process, it's a seven-step process that we have or our roadmap to success. August through September, these timeframes are a little bit flexible. We can move them around a little bit, but we try to stay as close as possible. It's our pre-work where we work with senior leadership teams, our directors and assistant city managers, and the city managers come together and discuss our future council retreats. So we start preparing for that. We'll move into our communication aspects of it where we start receiving feedback from residents and from staff through surveys. So you know, we just recently had our resident survey, and you'll hear about some of that information further along in the presentation today. And we'll also discuss the CIP-TIP process. We'll then go to our strategic planning retreat, which we had in January of this year, and then move into city council and staff feedback. So when we brought the consultant in, we discussed the strategic plan, did the high level rollup of that strategic planning retreat and discussed those priorities. Staff would then work in the April to May timeframe to finalize the strategic plan, and then by June, we would like to have the strategic plan adopted, which we're here tonight for. Starting July 1 is the new fiscal year, we would actually start the implementation phase there where we'd start working with the action plans and start measuring our progress along for each one of those priorities.
Good evening, council. It was a pleasure to be able to come before you. So part of our strategic planning process is we want to gauge the interest of our residents to get their feedback in the way in which they feel we should advance the priorities of the city. So part of our resident survey that we took in this year, we wanted to capture our resident survey highlights. This is where, this is why residents said we were excelling, the areas in which we were excelling. So we have this broken up into basically two categories. It's our satisfaction with major categories of city services, and then our perceptions of the city of Fayetteville. All right, so I'm just going to touch on a few. It's always good, you know, to give staff positive feedback in, in where we're improving and moving in the right direction. So you can see here, city employee customer service rate 17% above our national average. Solid waste services rated 15% above national average. Our parking wreck facilities and programs rated 13% above national average. Our fire protection and rescue services rated 10% above national average. And then you can see a few more that rated 1% above national average or on par. So that was our satisfaction in, in major categories. The next one is the perception of the city from our residents. So this part of the survey was done on what we say a Likert scale, which basically means it has a, a high rating all the way down to a low rating. So this one rated on very satisfied, all the way down to very dissatisfied. So we can hear, we can see here from our results that 50% were or above rated at very satisfied or satisfied with the quality of life in our neighborhood, overall police relationship with your community, overall availability of sports venues in Fayetteville, and then the quality of services overall that the city of Fayetteville was providing to our residents. So these are our highlights that we took away from the resident survey in, in areas in which staff was very excelling at. So it's, it's always important that, that we, that we, you know, give our residents this feedback, give our staff this feedback, and show even where council, where we're all working together to push the city in the right direction. So as we move forward from our highlights, it's also important that we capture our resident priorities. These are the areas in which our residents said that our council and staff needs to focus their attention in the upcoming fiscal year or, or multiple fiscal years. I'm, I'm not going to go through every one of these line by line. We actually have this document. We provided this for you. I do want to touch on a few for you guys here tonight. So the first one is the overall maintenance of, of city streets. This was the first priority that, that residents said we wanted to direct our attentions toward. So staff has worked diligently to pull together an action plan in ways in which they can continue to work to achieve this priority. Some of this include using a data-driven approach as, as they always do for their street maintenance, utilizing the paver software to prioritize streets and, and recommend the right treatment at the right time based on those PCI scores. And then also, we're going to look to expend those Geo Bonds. We have 14.5 million in those Geo Bonds that we need to get expended by 2026. This would really help us accelerate this priority, this priority and accelerate the street res servicing. So the next party that we have is our overall quality of police protection. We worked diligently with our staff to, to pull together a comprehensive action plan. Of course, this will stem from the OCS discussion and really pull together everything that council, staff, and the community is working together to, to achieve. So a few actions that staff has worked together to pull together for this priority is to continue implementing and promoting community policing programs that emphasize building positive relationships between police officers and residents to build positive relationships and, and also decrease juvenile delinquency. They're also looking at providing ongoing training for officers in areas such as de-escalation, conflict resolution, and effective communication to improve interactions with our community The next priority that we have here is our overall enforcement of codes and ordinances. Here, staff has developed a plan to be more targeted in this approach, which emphasizes analyzing data to identify three most common code violations and prioritize those enforcement efforts for a comprehensive approach in addressing these issues. And then they're also going to look at a more targeted public information campaign, get educational materials out there so residents can also be aware on what they can do to, to really clean up that junk and debris and, and even for the removal of abandoned vehicles. And then the last, final priority that residents addressed in the survey was the overall effectiveness of communication with the public. So this is a, an ongoing effort for staff. We're always trying to look at ways that we can improve our communication to our residents. So if we're here, we're looking to enhance social media presence and engagement and also adapt to resident preferences. So what we found in our resident survey that one of the, the, the main elements that residents receive their information from the city is through social media. So this is a way that we can really tap into that key result from our resident survey and, and lean into that information outlet for, for our residents. And then, of course, we want to make sure that information that is out there is accurate information with context. And then we're going to empower our city representatives to make sure they equip the right communication tools to do their job effectively. Have a part of, this, this plan is what we consider our actual strategic framework. This was adopted by council some planning cycles ago, and it's still in place today. This, this is the actual strategic framework in which staff operates on a, on a daily basis. It consists of a goal and objective, performance measures, and then stakeholders, collaborators, and partners which assist in achieving that goal. We, we've, we've seen this for quite some time. We're not going to go through it line by line, but it's just, it's important to reemphasize this is our framework that we utilize on a daily basis. So we have our goal one, a safe and secure community. Goal two, responsive city government supporting a diverse and viable economy with its related objectives and performance measures. Then we have goal three, city investment in today and tomorrow. We have goal four, which is one of our, our larger goals, desire replaced to live. We have goal four, which is one of our larger goals, desire replaced to live, work, and recreate. This is again what we consider our quality of life goal. Goal five, financially sound city, providing exemplary city services. And then goal six, collaborative citizen and business engagement.
So council, here we have, we started getting into the action plans for the strategic priorities that was brought up during the council retreat and then brought back and approved by council. Looking at our priority one, which also aligns with our goal one, is to integrate a comprehensive approach to violence reduction and mental health response. So the actions here, you would notice that some of these actions are actually overlapping with the resident survey, but at the same time, you'll see some of these are large-scale projects that have already been started now because we know it is going to be a large push and we wanted to go ahead and start getting ahead of it. So you notice on the first one is for the action plan is to conduct a comprehensive assessment to identify overlapping ancillary and community services along with service gaps. If you noticed for the Public Safety Summit, we provided that. We had a presentation with council where we presented some of that information upfront. From that, developing the Office of Community Safety based on industry best practices, we did start doing some preliminary research on that. And that will be something that Dr. Tate was mentioning, that we can get more information from him about other possibilities of other ventures that we could also look at. I'm not going to read through each one of these here, but there are actions that are tied to this priority and this goal one. Looking at the measures of success, these are measures that council has identified in the strategic planning retreat that they would want, that they would consider this a success. So looking at clear OCS role definitions and ensure effective implementation and coordination. As stated earlier, we have the director for the OCS position, once hired and brought in, we will work with them to lay out that program and the staffing and how that would be working together to implement that as seamlessly as possible. Adherence to establish best practices and comparable initiatives and reduce crime rates as an outcome of integrated violence and mental health strategy. Looking at the communication and engagement side of priority one, we have city website, social media. Again, as Mr. Brave Boy stated earlier, that was the top two vote getters from residents is how they receive their information from the city and how they interact with their local government. So we want to make sure we use those two platforms and also community outreach. From the partners that we spoke to that has an OCS already active, that was one of the biggest benefits to them was to actually have a community outreach that was active. So being able to make sure that we're actually out in the community and working with our residents and getting feedback from them is going to be a critical aspect that we need to make sure that we focus on. And looking at the performance measures and KPIs, the KPIs that you see here could be the same now, but based on input and the way the data comes back, there may be times that we need to change that. So we would need to be a little flexible with those KPIs. We may add some that are pertinent six months down the road versus right now. So as this progresses and as this priority moves along, we will be reassessing it and checking it at least on a quarterly basis to make sure that we are progressing forward. Priority two focuses on, aligned with goal four, focuses on continuing the city's commitment to revitalization efforts emphasizing affordable housing needs. Looking here, we want to promote and advertise our homebuyer assistance program to encourage increased homeownership while also continuing to promote existing programs, including commercial exterior improvements, gap financing, and technical assistance to stimulate economic growth and facilitate business expansion. We also, to move priority two along, want to look at designated blighted areas for revitalization and demolition by land use and zoning. So we want to reuse those revitalization efforts across the city and not just have it located to just one specific area. We want to be able to look at that across the city in general. For measures of success, we want to have increased revitalization across the city, additional investment after city investment, so anything post-grant, and then consolidation of revitalization efforts. Again, we would have the city website, social media, newspaper, community outreach, and statewide conferences as ways of communication and engaging with our partners and the residents. And you see here, there's a lot of KPIs and performance measures that we will be judging and reviewing and basing those on, on this quarterly basis. Some of these KPIs will only come in at an annual basis, like the point in time count comes in at a yearly basis, but some of these are done on a monthly basis and we will be working to monitor those. Priority three aligns also with goal four. This is to increase parks and rec opportunities for youth engagement and interaction. We want to make sure that we sustain a partnership for the Orange Street School Project to also help develop diverse programming for, tailored for youth and foster skill building and community engagement. We also want to provide STEM opportunities through partnerships to empower youth with skills in science, technology, engineering, and math. These measures of success that was developed under strategic plan was increased access to and the total number of programming hours available for youth activities and decreased overall youth crime rate. Looking at the communication and engagement here, we want to make sure that we use our internal marketing and communication, but at the same time, also using Fayetteville, Cumberland, Parks and Rec Magazine, social media. And one of the most important to me was the participant surveys. We want to survey them for both satisfaction, but also for future programming. We want to see how satisfied they are with the program and they're currently receiving, but also get feedback for future initiatives that we could use to move those areas further. The KPIs here again would be one that we would constantly monitor. As programs are added, as things are changed, we will monitor those and add KPIs as needed.
Next up, priority four, which council has identified is to use city-owned property to enhance economic growth opportunities throughout the city. As you can recall, this was brought to council not too long ago and staff is still constantly working on this. A lot of this work is already underway. Some of the actions that have been developed for this is to create a comprehensive database of surplus real properties for inventory management and tracking purposes. We're also looking to utilize GIS mapping to analyze and potentially merge properties to form larger lots, you know, just to help for enhancing development opportunities. And then looking at the current tax rate, evaluating the current tax rate and market values for these properties to help us make those educated and data-driven decisions. Some measures of success for this priority, of course, is to get those tax, those assets back to the tax rolls and then to identify a total dollar amount or current value of our assets. We're going to utilize the city's website, of course, social media marketing campaigns, newspaper, and also internal department of communication. And then we've already started with a few of these KPIs, tracking the total number of properties and getting those dollars out there and we'll monitor those moving forward. And then the final priority identified by council is to articulate and define who we are as a city, to tell our story in Fayetteville and beyond. This is a constant priority for staff and we're always looking at ways that we can tell our story. But now we're looking at it in a more defined way and more. And to do this, we're going to be looking at working with our community partners, the Arts Council, Cool Springs Downtown, looking to really enhance Fayetteville's local and national brand image. We're looking, of course, to attract potential businesses for economic development, the market, travel, and tourism, which is related to Fayetteville, what Fayetteville is hosting, and also always to attract potential residents to come and live in Fayetteville. Some measures of success, of course, is our resident perception more closely aligned with the current data. So this is that infamous metric that we always look at, perception versus reality, you know, trying to get the two to align. It's something that we're always looking at, just trying to refine how exactly we capture that and get those on one accord. And then finally, we'll increase the resident survey ratings for efficient city communication to the public. So as you can recall from the resident survey, this is one of their priorities as well that they want us staff and council to focus on. So those align really good from council's perspective and residents as well. We have a very detailed engagement and communication plan that we're looking at for this priority. Our scope, of course, is citywide, regional, and statewide. Our target audience is our residents, both current and potential residents, businesses, tourists, and also potential investors within the city. We're looking to collaborate in joint efforts with our key partners, strategic partners, and then also market this really well through social media, web, Fayette TV, and also print and digital publications. We have a few of these KPIs already underway and we're constantly refining these and we'll continue to track and report back on these, on this priority.
To start rounding out the presentation tonight, we have our net steps and our conclusion. Starting July 1, after the strategic plan is adopted, we will start our implementation phase where we execute our action plans that were developed according to our timelines and milestones and start assigning responsibility to establish those clear communication channels. From there, we would roll into our monitoring and evaluation, so establishing mechanisms to monitor the progress and start tracking our effectiveness and regularly check those KPIs, so those performance metrics that we had seen listed on those priorities. So we want to track those KPIs, do periodic reviews to assess those objectives and adjust as needed. Reporting and communication, so we will come back and do quarterly updates, performance reports to the city council, along with a revamped scorecard. One thing that we wanted to focus on was making sure that scorecard was revamped so you would actually have data points that would be relative to where we are today. So we are working to revamp that also, along with the strategic plan itself. And then communicating successes, challenges, and changes in the actual plan. So being transparent with council, if we see a hiccup, make sure we bring that to council and letting you know ahead of time that we see an issue and there may be changes or anything that needs to be taking place. We want to make sure that we're letting you know about that. Adaptation and adjustment, so remaining flexible and responsive to changes and circumstances. There may be things outside of external issues that may arise that we may need to go back and readjust some of our priorities. And in that case, we would go back and look at that and come up with a plan of how we get back on track. So adjusting the action plan to address emerging priorities, challenges, and stakeholder feedback. We want to make sure that we celebrate achievements, so recognize and celebrate milestones and successes attained during the planned implementation, and also to highlight achievements to boost morale and motivation among stakeholders and also within our community. The last step here is our continuous improvement, so actively seek opportunities for improvement and innovation through the implementation process and learn from both successes and failures. One thing that we had wanted to do this time was to make sure, once you look at anything that has either strategic plan on it, all the way from the pre-planning, all the way to the implementation, everything should be as streamlined as possible. We're trying to integrate things from here to the budget, to the one pager that we're doing, to the book itself, to the presentation. Everything should be streamlined and cohesive. When you look into the budget book at KPIs, there should be KPIs there that are also on your scorecard. So having that cohesiveness there, we're trying to make sure that everything is consistent. So if you look at the snapshot here of the strategic plan book, this was, would be your actual document that you would have. This would be our book. We looked at some peer cities and wanted to see how we could improve our strategic plan book itself. We felt this was the best look, is one of the cleanest designs that we could find. So we started working on this, actually been working on it since the strategic planning retreat itself. We felt this was the best fit for council and it was a clean, sleek look and it was just very content-based versus graphic-based. So we thought it would be a good fit for the plan post-COVID. It's a new strategic plan, so we wanted a new feel to the whole book itself. So tonight, council, we have two options. We have city council accepts and adopts the FY25 strategic plan as presented, or city council rejects the recommended FY25 plan as presented and provides additional direction to the city manager. Staff's recommendation is for city council to accept and adopt the FY25 strategic plan as presented. And we stand available for any questions that you may have.
All right, sir. Do have a couple of lights on. Have Councilman Behar, Benavente, and, oh, several, Max McLaughlin, Davis, and myself. Councilman here.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. We always work pretty hard when it comes to us developing our strategic goals, and I think we've done well this go-round also. On one of your slides, gentlemen, and thank you all for your report, you guys always present well. In the stakeholders area, there was a, I mean, it's a fair number, but I, I would love for us to continue to do these things that we're speaking over, speaking about that you presented tonight, but you have a 64% of satisfaction on the quality of life. Where is that? Yeah, there, yeah, that's it. From our residents and a combine of all of the forms of communication and networking that you presented in here, those are the, all of the forms that were used to get to where we are.
For the resident survey, you already said the ways that we collected the information.
Right. To get, to get to the 64.
Yep, so everyone that completed that survey, that they had a set number that we needed to get that confidence interval. They were mailed out and then also messages were sent to those residents that those addresses were selected across the city. Based on those that responded, at least 64% of them were either very satisfied or satisfied. There were some that were neutral, which is not included in that 64%, so that's yes or no. But then the rest of the 36% fell in that neutral, dissatisfied, or very dissatisfied.
Well, at least with what you did receive, from my perspective, this does give us an opportunity to know where, where we need to continue to be working.
Yes, sir.
To get that, that number even higher. When you say you also use social media, and I like using social media, how do you get the returns from information from those on, is it by likes? Is it, is it something else that you have that, that you're able to register to see that someone is looking at this particular flyer or whatever it is that you have out there? How do you receive the information? Because I'm pretty sure not everybody's commenting.
Yes, sir.
On each, yeah.
There are metrics that, I think Mr. Jody can speak a little bit more on it. They can't see interactions, but I'll let him delve in that a little bit deeper.
Yeah, no, I'm actually, I'm actually the director now, just so you know. Thanks. Hey, good morning or evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lauren Beimer. I'm the marketing communications for the city. To answer your question, sir, there's a, there's a variety of ways and we actually just went into contract with a company called Sprout Social that helps us evaluate all of those determining factors. So not everyone likes, but there are algorithms out there that determine on how much screen time someone will rest on a particular post, how many shares it has, how much bounce it has. So there's a lot of different ways that we measure that and my team does a really good job of putting those together. We try to do it every other week for you in the communications update that we send, so.
So whenever, because I go to the site, our city site quite often.
Yes, sir.
Just looking to see what's there and some information that I even can take myself and share as I go throughout the community and communities. And so when a person goes to a slide that we're doing, the new splash pads open, the new center, senior center, or whatever case it may be, you can tell, are you saying that you're there where you can tell how long a person spent time looking at that slide?
Well, not me personally, but there's algorithms.
Whatever, you know, whatever technology that you use, whoever is doing it, however it's done.
There are ways to calculate and it's normally cumulative, so it's not an individual. I know how much Mr. Hare spends on a particular time, but it's calculated, cumulative, so that we can get those answers. And then we can build trends so that we know what works, what information is reaching our residents, what information can be done in a better, more clear, positive way so that people spend time reading the information that we were putting out.
And then that, that information, then we take that information and see how we can go forward to improve on whatever it is, whatever item.
The marketing communications department is constantly evaluating what works and what doesn't to best present information to our residents. Yes, sir.
Well, I would love to see how we can take this 64% up even further. So thanks, guys. Good report. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilman Benavente.
I noticed that in addition to the presentation you gave, you also put a draft strategic plan together. And I'm not sure if this is a question for our city manager or not, but when we were discussing the organizational chart and perhaps the need to make reference to our Office of Community Safety somewhere next to city manager's portrait, is that something that we can have adjusted for the strategic plan document as well?
Per city manager, we can easily change that.
City manager, here. City manager Hewitt.
We can make whatever adjustments council chooses.
In that case, um, Mayor Covey, I know that right now, the recommenda- or the request by the staff is to adopt it as presented, um, but I would ask that perhaps we make a recommendation to accept it with the addition of, um, the Office of Community Safety in the, in the organizational chart.
So, we have a couple of, of the questions, so.
Come time, and whoever wants to make that motion, I just asked for that.
All right. All right. Thank you, council member. Uh, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was just gonna, um, let staff know that, um, I appreciate, um, the actions for this, um, the strategies, um, that you guys have been working on, um, 'cause some of the conversation we had through our strategic plan retreat. Um, I'm looking forward to the public hearing, so that our, um, community have the opportunity to give some input and feedback. Um, and I look forward to our, um, budget work session on this Thursday. So, I just want to say thank you. And I'm, um, council member Benavente, um, I'll second your motion.
All right, I'll circle back to you guys. All right, so, guys, great presentation. Just have a couple of quick questions. One, uh, you kind of touched on a little bit, but no specifics, I probably need Mr. Lauren back up for that. Um, every one of these slides, except one, where it goes through the priority list, uh, under communication engagement, has social media. Um, and what I wanted to know is how many people, because that is our main vehicle of communication, how many people we have on our social media team?
What were you pointing at? Oh, okay, all right. All right, Mayor, I apologize. Um, so, uh, Mr. David Scott is our primary and lead person for all social media. However, um, there are a couple of other people within my team that if he needs assistance, um, either building graphics or short videos, we pull together as a team to do that. In addition to that, the, uh, police department, they handle their own social media, and we're exploring other options for other departments to, uh, have their own independent sites. However, we're, we're going through the evaluation process to determine if that would be viable, to make sure that they have enough content, the right content, um, and they nest well within the city's, uh, overall messaging scheme.
But, uh, I appreciate that. Well, I do think we have to start thinking forward. The one thing that we, we have learned is a lot of residents don't feel that they know what's going on enough, and I think because social media is, you've indicated is one of your key channels for doing that, I think we need to think of more broadly that it, your organization this size may need more than one or two people. Uh, if each, you know, there needs to be some coordination, so that people are just not putting out everything.
Right.
But at the end of the day, when people want to know what's going on, that's a vehicle that they use, and so they do need to know about development services changes, or they do need to know about the newsletter that city manager is sending out, but he's blasting, emailing it, but maybe what would be the traction if it was across multiple departments of the city through, uh, social media outlets? And so, I think we've got to start to think more, because this is the future communication channel. Even when we're running campaigns, I've had to do it different each time, so I think you have to, have to broaden your horizon on that, maybe just not one or two people or somebody that steps in, 'cause we're really not taking it too serious, it, when we treat it like that.
Well, I would, I would say that, um, we, we synchronize our effort across multiple platforms, so when we do send out Mr. Hewitt's, uh, message, that does get posted to all of our social media platforms. When we have programs on Faye TV, those do get shared. Uh, one of the challenges, and I'm sure that you have all faced it with, with your campaigns, is if, um, you inundate people with information, then they tend to ignore your information. And so, that, that's the balancing act that we are trying to achieve, to ensure that we, we get the right amount of information at the right time to the right people on the right platform.
So, so, wanna, you know, the age of data, right, 'cause data is everything now. You can process anything. So, each department that encounters one of our citizens for services, you know, development services or something, is there a way to specifically get information to that group of people? Because we know, we can tell by our data who contacts us for what, or how often they do it. So, you know, social media, we're able to target people's level of interest. You know, if you like certain ads, uh, uh, you, you have a, a certain profile that I can target for whatever message I want to get. So, I think you can filter it, but I think we've got to start thinking that way, to get people, you know, meet people where they are with information.
Yes, sir. And, and we're working through a, a lot of those challenges that you're talking about.
Okay. All right, next thing, uh, I think you've hit the city manager's report, and some of the surveys. Um, want to talk about how we got the information out. Did we mail them? Did we social media blast them? Did we call people? How do we, how do we survey everybody?
So, for the survey itself, um, we tried to make it as, uh, comprehensive as possible, so we went across the city. It was originally mailed out, um, but there was also a link that was attached to the survey, so you could do it i- on the paper itself and mail it in, or do it digitally. Um, it did ask for the address, because we wanted those specific addresses across the, the city, so that it would be representative of the whole city. So, it had to be, um, within that realm to make it statistically, uh, valid.
But the chief vehicle that we, uh, used was mail?
No, no, sir. We also did social media. Um, there was a campaign that was also running at the same exact time online, um, so.
So, the campaign online was take the city survey, you know, and, and they didn't have to dig way down through the, the site to see it, it was a link, they went straight to it?
Yes, sir, and we also had it on the city's website itself.
What, what percentage of participation did you get back?
Um, we got over our 600, we wanted 600, we got up to 605 and then paused it.
Out of?
We, we needed 600.
How many, oh, how many did we send? I mean, you don't know how many we sent?
I think they sent seven times the number.
Yeah, they typically send out seven times the required number for statistical validity, validity. So, they maybe send out 4,000 or 5,000.
You got back 600.
Instead of getting 600.
Okay.
Which is that 95% confidence interval.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilmember Benavente, so your, your, uh, motion, can you repeat that? Uh, and then, uh, you said it's on the organization chart, so it's on the other form. All right, can you repeat it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just, uh, move that we, uh, adopt the recommendation, um, from staff to, uh, take on the strategic planning, um, that they've presented with the addition of the OCS on the organizational chart.
So, right now, you said it's not included. So, Mr. Hewitt, where, uh, yeah, this is the one that's online, right? The old chart?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
So, where, where would that be included, since this, uh, department doesn't quite exist yet?
Well, there, um, there are two issues. One is that the PowerPoint that the, um, that Chris and Andy are sharing with you, and the organization chart they showed in their draft budget, I mean, in their draft booklet, did not include it. But the updates that you have at your desk, which should have been at your desk tonight, show that it is reports directly to the city manager.
Oh, okay. So, this is the insert?
Yes, sir.
All right, so. Okay, so it's updated?
Yes, sir. The, the one that we have now is draft. We would get the new updated org chart and add that in.
So, it should be consistent, yeah, all right.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, motion to accept, uh, since the change you've made is, uh, you, you still have the floor, sir?
Yeah, with, with it in mind that you guys are going to make it consistent, um, I'll accept it, or I move that we accept the recommendation, um, for the strategic plan presentation.
All right, is the motion by Councilmember Benavente, or seconded by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin? Was that right? Was that her? All right, all right. Any discussion on the motion to accept the report with the amended changes indicated? All right, council, I'll look to you for action on it. All right, Madam Clerk, unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good job.
Y'all have a good evening.
Mr. Brayboy, Mr. Lowry?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hewitt, uh, I know this is what the news is here for, so, where is he at? Okay. All right, and this, uh, just to remind everybody, including the news, this is the recommended, recommended city manager's version of this, so this is not the budget that we're, it's a draft. It's a draft.
Mr. Mayor, please.
So, we have some red ink, and we'll probably add to this thing.
We've been working together for almost 10 years now, so we got this. You and I, we got this, we got this.
All right, Mr. Hewitt, go ahead.
I appreciate you. Um, as the mayor, um, indicated, um, uh, as the city manager, I'm required to present to you a balanced budget, and what is before you, um, tonight, as well as what should be posted online as of, um, this afternoon, and as also available, a print copy available in the city clerk's office for public inspection, is a balanced budget that totals all funds about $320 million, and I will go through some of the highlights
I want to start by, um, thanking, um, the public, and thanking the city council for the citizens for their input, as Chris and Andy mentioned on this, on the survey, and for the city council for your guidance and leadership in helping develop, um, the strategic plan that you just adopted. Um, while we have tried very carefully to put as much, um, emphasis in the budget on items that, um, are base items as well, we understand that the public desires to see as does the council, to make sure that the items that you feel are most important to move the city forward are in fact included in the budget. And I believe that this budget strikes that careful balance between what our needs and wishes and wants are, as well as our community's ability to pay. But to start, um, want to just take a moment to celebrate some of the wins that we've enjoyed together, many of us as a council and all of us as a community. This year, we struck the five-year anniversary of opening of Segway Stadium, uh, the completion of our 2016 Parks and Recreation Bond Projects. Uh, in the update that I sent to council, uh, I think it was yesterday, um, we had almost a thousand people who have enjoyed, to some element, the senior center east that you just cut the ribbon on, on, uh, was it two Fridays ago? Two, one Friday ago?
Good.
And, um, just looking at the number of new registrations, that, um, people who had not previously been to the center, new registrations. Um, it tells you, not only that, but the citizen survey, it tells you, um, in addition to the citizens passing the 2016 bond referendum, as well as the $97 million GL bond referendum from 2022, that your public, that our citizens demand more, and they're willing to spend more to get and create and maintain the community they want. And when you open up a new facility, as you did on the senior center, what happened? 500 people showed up. They didn't ask, was there a bus route there? They didn't ask if there were sidewalks there. They showed up, and they had a wonderful time, as did you. Imagine what's going to happen when we start opening up some of these fire stations, when we start opening up at the, doing the River Park, when we finish the work at MacArthur Road. Your citizens are appreciative, but they're also demanding. They don't want you to be less bold. They want you to continue to be bold. They want you to be bold on things like OCS. They want you to be bold on things like infrastructure. They want you to be bold on things like community investment and empowerment. And I think, again, this budget does some of that. Um, over the last five years, working with council and our EDC and other partners, we have created more than 1,600 jobs, um, more than $336 million in new investment in our community. Crime, as the chief mentioned a few meetings back, is at a seven-year low. Our point-in-time count that the county released last week shows a reduction of 21% in homelessness, and that also, I think, is attributable, attributable to the city council's opening of the Day Resource Center less than a year ago. But this budget and our organization are not without our challenges. Some of the main ones we have are recruitment and retention. If someone asks you, what is the main product of city government, what would you say? It's service. We don't create widgets. We don't sell fruit, you know, we don't build houses always, but we provide service to the citizens. And the services that we provide, whether it be a trash truck, whether it be police, fire, parks and rec, is done by staff, and we cannot do that unless we're able to recruit and retain qualified staff. We also have a challenge of more than $9 million in net sales tax revenue has been lost. I think it's more like 9.5, and I'm sure we'll cover that in great, um, detail at some of your upcoming budget work sessions. Inflation has been a real driver for a lot of goods and services that the city procures. We have aging infrastructure, and we also have economic pressures and national and state political landscape changes, some of those the council is poised to be able to address for the first time in a number of years. So, I want to do something that Dr. Gerald Newton likes to do with us. He likes to do the bottom line up front, you know, don't bury the lead. Now, the total recommended budget grew by $8.8 million, or about 2.83%. $4 million of funding has been allocated for Office of Community Safety-related activities, of which about 1.5 is new cash. .05 cents ad valorem tax rate increase is needed to fund the $8.3 billion for public safety market adjustments and to make, and to address compression that the city council heard about in the police department. We're also proposing in the recommended budget, a 4% of midpoint merit increase for all other non-step employees, which also includes a 1% 401K increase for non-sworn employees as well. Sworn police, um, personnel are to receive 5 me, 5% 401K as mandated by North Carolina law. Other changes would be a $1 monthly increase to your stormwater fee, taking that to $7 a month, a $10 annual increase to solid waste fee, which is recommended to continue to provide solid waste services. I think that moves that to 275, um, for the year, and a .111 MSD ad valorem rate increase to provide for enhanced services in the downtown municipal district. That will generate, I believe as well, about $161,000, um, in additional revenue to support the downtown MSD. Key highlights, as you'll recall, this current fiscal year, we committed to returning to the city, or rather, underspending our budget by almost $19 million. This year, we are assuming for the upcoming year that we will have an 8% vacancy rate, and we will freeze, a hard freeze, 35 terminally vacant positions that will net about $10.6 million. We moved $341,000 from loose leaf collection to the environmental services fund, to be able to maintain this service. One of the things that you try to do when you prepare municipal budgets is you try to do it based on equity. And so, the people who benefit from a service should be asked to help pay for that service. As we have currently have it, when we charge the loose leaf collection to our general, um, tax rate, people at the mall who don't receive solid waste services, don't receive loose leaf services, they end up paying. There's some discussion about whether or not that helps spread out the cost to government, but in times like this, where our options are to either fund it using the solid waste fee, or as what was proposed, as we were going through as a staff, was to actually eliminate the service, it was to move it to the environmental services fund and pay for it out of there. So, the people, the 62,000 households who benefit from the loose leaf collection will be now asked to help pay for that directly versus being on the ad valorem tax rate. Uh, we are proposing $747,000 of general fund balance to maintain routes within the city, as the city conducts a fair equity study. Many of you know that we have not changed our transit fee, um, for, Mr. Kelly, is it a decade easily? Um, in order to, uh, adjust that rate, we have to do an equity study, fair equity study, and that is currently underway, and we hope to be able to bring that back to council sometime later this year or early next year. We've maintained funding for all of our capital programs, maintained funding for community events, um, such as Cool Springs, $750,000 of program fee increases throughout the general fund, which we look forward to talking to the council about maybe on Thursday, $8.1 million of other current operating requests are not recommended, and we look forward to also talking to council about what those cuts are as well, things which are not recommended to be, uh, moved forward in our upcoming budget. Overall, though, we had a couple of goals. Um, my goals always are that, um, we take care of those people who take care of us, which is the city staff. Number one is that nothing that we do is going to harm, um, anyone in the community and leave a gap of service that can't be filled. And then the last one is, is that we also try to plan for the future. And again, I believe that this budget does all three of those things. So, these slides, which are, I think, in front of all the council members, um, I won't read all of the numbers to you, but instead, I will just draw your attention to, um, probably the total sources line at the bottom, from the revised budget in the general fund of $220 million for the current fiscal year, we're recommending $217 million, or 1.4% decrease. General fund uses, you'll see as well, balance from, go back and forth. We're proposing to, um, have revenues of 217, we're proposing to use 217. Office of Community Safety, um, I'll just leave this here for a moment, um, anticipate getting some questions about it. getting some questions about it. But some of the things that are already incorporated in Office of Community Safety-related type activities are the mental health liaison, uh, law enforcement diversion program, proved project, Phoenix Center, sound thinking, which is the shot spotter program, homeless coordinator, victim advocate reentry program, EKG, and other parks and recreation, um, opportunities, which actually doesn't have anything listed at the moment. But that from the general fund equates out to be about two point one million dollars. ARPA funded is about one point three. Uh, block grants is four point four hundred and sixty thousand for a total funded of three point nine million, almost four million dollars. Public safety market adjustments. Well, we met with the council earlier this year. Um, the council members, um, received a briefing from our human resources department director. And we looked at a variety of things. Number one was looking at the police and, or public safety step programs. And what we always do when you fund a budget or you, you honor that step program, so you fund that next step. What we did with our base budget with it, without a tax rate increase was we said, if we are going to honor the step plan as it currently exists for fire, police, um, and nine one one, that will equate to, um, a certain dollar amount. We made sure that we were able to get that honoring of that step plan within the current tax rate, which is fifty-three point nine five cents. We also, within that current tax rate, put the four percent for, um, non-sworn general employees, along with their, um, increase, recommended increase of one percent for 401K, and that fifty-three point nine five cents. But then we also looked and we said that we know that our police officers and our fire department in particular, that they are not being paid market and we are having a terrible time not only recruiting, but retaining those staff. So what was presented to council earlier was increasing the step for a police officer, step zero, from forty-three thousand to fifty thousand dollars. This is in the recommended budget. It was also in the recommended budget for, to increase the firefighter, um, step zero from forty thousand eight hundred to forty-five thousand dollars. And then the other, other adjustments that you see on screen, including telecommunicator ones and telecommunicator twos as well. We also provided for compression of the thirty police officers that were discussed, um, with council during that presentation. These total, I believe it was, uh, don't let me do the math, was it eight point one? Jeffrey, I think it's, um, but the tax rate increase that we're proposing to five cents generates seven point seven million dollars. And so I would say that the tax rate increase, again, that we are proposing a five cents is to go to the public safety market adjustments, as well as to making sure that we're able to recruit and retain those public safety personnel that you see listed on this chart. Stormwater, again, we're proposing a one dollar increase to the monthly fee, um, going from six dollars to seven dollars. This is a sixteen point six seven percent increase in stormwater utility fund. Environmental Services Fund, we're proposing a ten dollar a year increase to go from two hundred and sixty-five dollars to two hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is a three point seven seven percent increase. Transit Operating Fund, proposing to increase by, uh, almost, uh, nothing, about three hundred thousand dollars, I think that is. And that works out to be a two points four seven percent increase. Other funds that you see listed are parking funds, central business district, E nine one one, PWC assessment fund, uh, typo, property and liability fund, risk management fund, airport operating fund, Liosa, which is law enforcement, um, offices separation, special separation allowance fund, fleet management internal services fund, and others. And the percent change is also listed there. So let's talk briefly about the process. I know I ran through the PowerPoint tonight, and you cannot do justice to a three hundred and nineteen million dollar budget, um, standing at a podium in ten or fifteen minutes. I would be, um, honored to walk y'all through these numbers, um, at the, um, at your upcoming budget work sessions, myself and staff. But what you have in front of you is, is that we're looking to have a first budget work session this coming Thursday at ten AM here at City Hall. We hope to cover OCS, public safety enterprise funds, address any council questions, and start developing a parking lot. As you'll recall, last year, we did the parking lot. Council members, if something you want, something you don't want, something you have questions about, we put it on the board. And as we go along through our, um, processes of discussing the budget, council then decides what they're going to take out of the parking lot and put in the budget or vice versa. Our second budget work session is scheduled for May twenty-third at ten AM. Um, and I think, um, that's when you guys are flying out, ma'am, the twenty-third of May. And so as I mentioned, uh, mayor, um, council during your dinner meeting, we'll probably be asking council to, um, move that date up so that, uh, um, some of the members, all the members can attend, a second one. And then we are also requesting tonight that you receive the report and call for the required, um, statutory public hearing for May twenty-eighth at six thirty PM. Then we also have another budget work session slated for June third at two PM, and we hope that we'll be able to wrap up all of those questions on parking lot items. But as the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and others know who've been on council for multiple years, um, we're here until council's satisfied, until we get a budget that you like. Our hope is that we would be able to, um, uh, look to adopting the budget on June tenth, but we have until, um, the end of June to do so. That's, uh, all at council's pleasure. And with that, my, myself and the team will be happy to answer any questions that council has about the budget presentation.
All right, Ms. Hewitt, thank you. Do have a couple of questions. Councilmember Benevente in and here.
City Manager Hewitt, did you say there was a particular date that you wanted city council to make an adjustment to on that process page? Can we do that today?
Yes, um, sir, we, we can, um, I would ask, um, if we can, the clerk's office.
She typically coordinates that.
Coordinate that date, um, so that we can get it on your calendar. We, I, I do, very responsive, uh, to the fact that some of you have court dates and other things that aren't easy for you to adjust. So we will take that up first thing tomorrow morning, unless you have some suggested dates.
No, um, the only other question I have is, you know, as it relates to the May sixteenth, um, date and some of the things that we're going to discuss, um, you mentioned the, page eight, the OCS, uh, sort of breakdown. Will we have folks from, I think that the police department mainly that can speak to what lead is and maybe the main person from the proved project there, so he can speak to what exactly they do? There seems to be quite an amalgamation of different departments, uh, ECD to be included, to really dissect what these dollar figures are, where they go and how they're spent. So I guess I just wanted to make it clear upfront that that's my expectation, is that, uh, we have a robust discussion about what ought to be, uh, included towards the Office of Community Safety and what perhaps, I think after some discussion with city council, will come to recognize, shouldn't necessarily be held against the Office of Community Safety.
Got it. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman here.
Uh, th- thank you, Mayor. Council, I hope we don't, you don't look at this as a very small trivial, uh, concern stated tonight, but when, when we had our two gentlemen just before us, we talked about, uh, having community dialogue and, and community influence and how they feel about certain things. So I wanted it to be stated tonight, as we, uh, as I go through a lot of the communities, we talk about the community signage. And I've spoken to you about that, and I know that that particular thing has been removed. Okay, well, I'm gonna let you straighten me. I'm gonna let you correct me. Uh, but there's no, there's no budget entry for it, uh, unless that has changed from our last conversation. Now, a lot of our communities, um, like I say, it's a small thing to us, but the communities take pride in seeing, uh, their name on a community sign as you enter their particular community. I misunderstood, uh, until we had one of our meetings. I thought we were at a seventy-five thousand dollar budget, but it was my understanding that I had been corrected that it is fifty thousand, when we did have a itemized li- line, uh, for that. So if you could just explain that so citizens can, can hear that, because I talk about it everywhere.
Right.
And, you know, they like to see those community signs. How we're gonna go about, uh, doing that this budget year?
Yeah, um, I would, um, would encourage you to continue to do as I know you have with, and council members, which is to advocate to citizens to take advantage of the programs. If and when we run out of money for those programs, we can, will come back to council and try to reappropriate more. But there is twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget as it stands. There were, um, adjustments that had to be made. And so if once we, uh, and each sign cost about, about five thousand, Kelly? Um, and, um, uh, we can definitely come back, but I think that will probably be your first parking lot item that we will put on the board on, on Thursday.
Yes, sir. But I would like for it to be at least seventy-five thousand as far as a part of my parking lot discussion. Whenever I look over at the other funding and, for clarity, probably more for me than any of my members, I see the airport operation fund, and I do know, please correct me if I'm wrong, that our airport normally, uh, runs on its own self-sufficient budget. But I do see, uh, duh, 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 I see it here, what, six million plus for, um, twenty-five FY twenty, I mean FY twenty-four? And, uh, recommended, if I go down, seven million plus for FY twenty twenty-five. Explain, why do we, I, I mean, I, I know it's just a, it's a part of us knowing what the budget is, but our fund balance, our, uh, budgeting period that we're, we'll be speaking of, does that, we're really excluding the airport operation fund? This is something that they're giving to us for information?
Yes, sir.
Explain it to me.
It is for information. The airport, as, as you correctly said, um, they are, um, largely, almost completely self-supporting from their own revenues, as well as for grants and, and, and other things. Um, and this is required as part of your budget to, for you to adopt their operating capital improvement budgets as well. Uh, what you're seeing is, is that largely it's, it's almost unchanged, negligible from what was revised from current fiscal year to the recommended. But we will definitely spend some time with council to make sure that you have an awareness on all of those funds as well.
Okay, and my last question, all of the priorities that were put in place for our GEO bond from November of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Those priorities, unless the council overall changes, are we planning to stick to what those priorities were and what we stated to the public in getting them to vote for it, for us to get that ninety-seven mill? Are we sticking to those priorities?
It, it's two different bonds. You had a thirty-five mill in the two, twenty sixteen, and ninety-seven was just the last one.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. I'm, um, yes, sir. We are.
You know what I'm speaking of? I'm talking about the, the GEO bond for November of last year, okay?
Uh, yeah, twenty, yeah, twenty-three or twenty-two?
I put it as twenty-four, twenty-three.
Okay. So what, yes, sir, we, um, uh, we had put aside, I think it was fifty million or was it sixty million for public safety? Sixty for public safety. We had twelve for housing, um, and we had twenty-five, I think, for infrastructure. And, um, our hope is that we would not have to issue all of that debt for public safety. But based upon some information that I shared with council today, we won't be able to do as many partnerships as we had thought. And so we may end up, um, actually, um, expensing all of the sixty million dollars in public safety.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right, well, uh, I see Councilmember Benevente is hanging up again, but again, council, look forward to budget discussions. The clerk will coordinate with us an alternative date, uh, for that week. I do have a conflict as well, so, um, she will call us and get our individual availability. And we always have the option to stick additional meetings in there, uh, if we need to, to get it done, because we do have a hard stop given to us by the general assembly of June thirty, so we have to get it done, so.
Now, no one wants to go beyond that. We'd, we'd like to be timely. Um, but all I need from council is for you to, um, acquiesce to the, um, to the.
Gotcha. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we receive the presentation and set the public hearing to receive comments on the recommended budget for May twenty-eighth.
All right, there's motion by Councilmember Benevente. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Thompson in discussion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. By those voting, motion to adjourn. All right, have a good, good evening.